Let's call the City of Milton Common Council to order on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And can we get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Pigly Wiggly and Hometown Ace Hardware.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved second.
Public comments. Sam, if you'd like to talk now, you can, or you can wait until it comes up on the agenda item. Any other public comments for anything? Okay. Um, mayoral proclamation Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day began in commemoration of 500 years of survival and renewal of indigenous nations in the face of genocide, colonization, political, religious and cultural repression. And whereas the Milton Common Council recognizes that indigenous people of this hemisphere that will later be known as the Americas have lived on these lands since time immemorial. Inmemorial. And the Milton Common Council recognizes the fact that Milton is built upon the homelands of the indigenous people of this region. And whereas the Milton Common Council values the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, land conservation techniques, along with deep spiritual, cultural practice, helped shape the character of the land known as Wisconsin. And whereas the Milton Common Council will continue to support indigenous nations' social and environmental justice, religious freedom and tribal sovereignty efforts. And whereas the Milton Common Council honors our country's indigenous roots and correct history and seeks with this celebration to bring greater understanding of diversity by inclusion of indigenous peoples' culture and voice to the table in Milton, Wisconsin. And whereas the Milton Common Council will recognize the desire of all indigenous people representing all 567 tribal nations to celebrate the Second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day with special attention to Wisconsin's 12 federally recognized tribal nations. And now therefore be it resolved by the Milton Common Council duly assembled this first day of October 2024 to affirm and proclaim that the Second Monday in October will be known as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Milton. And I will sign that. Approval of minutes from September 17th of 2024.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 17th of 2024. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding acceptance of donation from Milton Storm Baseball.
Not a question, but that's a tremendous donation. I'd like to thank you very much for it.
Second.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. All right, the next item on our, and thank you very much and thank you for coming tonight. The next item on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2024-13 in support of municipal clerks, election inspectors and all election workers. Sam?
I'm a little taller. Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council, Mayor Welch and residents of Milton. My name is Sam Leibert and I'm the Wisconsin State Director at All Voting is Local. And I stand before you tonight in support of Resolution 2024-13. And I believe that we are at a critical moment for our democracy. Let's be clear, our clerks, our election inspectors, these individuals are the guardians of our democratic processes. They're not nameless faces. They are our neighbors, they are our friends, and they are members of our community. Every single day they show up to protect one of the most cherished rights, the right to vote. Now, we all know this truth, that democracy doesn't just happen. It takes work, it takes dedication, and it takes people who are willing to put in the time to ensure that every eligible voter has a voice. And that's what our election workers do. They stand in the gap for all of us, guaranteeing that elections are fair, accurate and transparent. But as we've seen all too often, there are some of those who want to undermine this process by targeting these very individuals with threats, harassment and intimidation. That, my friends, is not who we are as a community. That is not who we are as Wisconsinites, and that is not who we are as Americans. By passing this resolution tonight, we, you, the City of Milton, are saying that these brave election workers, what you're saying to them is, we've got your back. We stand with you because when we protect those who protect democracy, we're not just defending individuals, we're defending the very foundation of our country. And so I urge you tonight at the council to please pass this resolution and let it be known that Milton will always stand on the side of democracy, respect and decency. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sam. And attached with the common council agenda, it was a copy of the resolution. And I'll read it out loud and then the council can decide what action they want to take. Whereas election workers play an essential role in the administration of free, fair and accessible elections in the City of Milton and across Wisconsin. And whereas these dedicated individuals, including the city clerk, deputy clerk and election inspectors, act with the highest level of professionalism, ensuring that every eligible voter can cast their ballot. And whereas the integrity of the election process is fundamental to democracy and election workers are critical to upholding that process by maintaining transparency, accuracy and fairness. And whereas any form of threat, harassment or intimidation directed towards election workers undermines the democratic process and violates state and federal laws. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Milton reaffirms its support for municipal clerks, election inspectors and all individuals who serve as election workers, recognizing them as essential to our democracy. And be it further resolved that the City of Milton stands by these dedicated individuals who ensure the proper conduct of elections and commits to holding accountable anyone who threatens or harasses them to the fullest extent of the law. And be it finally resolved that the City of Milton encourages all members of the community to support and respect the individuals who work tirelessly to protect the right to vote. And is there any questions or comments or a motion?
I'd just like to say, Sam, as an election worker for the City of Milton, thank you for your kind and accurate and timely words. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Bill?
I was just going to move approval of the resolution.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2024-13. Any further questions or comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That resolution passes. Thank you so much for coming tonight. And thank you, council, for standing by our election staff and our clerks and our inspectors and everyone that makes our elections in the City of Milton run smoothly year after year after year. So thank you. Our most talented clerk Jenny will get you a copy before you leave. All right, the next item on the agenda is review of nonprofit 2025 budget requests. And you received, thank you, Sam. Thank you, Sam's mom. You were provided the documents for the budget requests. Is there any questions or comments or anything further that you would like from any of those that submitted documents? Okay. Paul?
Um, I think we'd like some guidance and maybe this is under the budget discussion. There was some discussion between 10-minute presentations at our next meeting or five-minute presentations. And I don't think council ever landed on a spot.
I'm, I think I made it pretty clear. I'm in the game for five. I think everything that they put in there explained it very well. I read all three of their requests, proposals, and I don't really know what would be gained by a 10-minute presentation as opposed to a five. But that's just me.
I agree with Ken. I'd go for the five minute.
Well, so are we on 10 then? Because we don't have like an action on nine. So there was just a review. So we'll.
That could fall under ten.
Okay, so presentation discussion and direction regarding the annual budget preparation. So is there a motion to give direction on how long the nonprofit presentations should be? We've heard from two. Anybody else want to speak or make a motion?
I just have a question. Because one of the things I've also heard is that sometimes when it ran long, that a lot of that came from the deus up here with a lot of questions or comments. Do we also want to put some limits on ourselves or no? I don't know if that's appropriate or not. First time doing this.
Um, I think in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of that was just discussion around the dollar amount to appropriate. But we certainly could limit our questions to the nonprofits or comments directed to them to five minutes. But I don't know if you want to limit debate on. I mean, you can, you can, but you know, maybe it's two separate things. You mean the one after the presentations?
Correct. Yeah, because they're not geared towards, like, they're not upper representative.
And my goal wasn't to stifle any healthy debate, but to maybe limit sometimes oration rather than questions on behalf of certain organizations. That was all.
I'm comfortable with informing the organizations, they have five minutes for their presentation. And then, you know, kind of limiting themselves, limiting themselves. I think the purpose for the next meeting really is seeking clarification if there are questions that we had about the presentation or the form that they fill in. So I think we can just be on our good behavior and do five minutes. But let them know in advance that they have five minutes.
I'm gonna let Eric have the gavel for that, you know. Charlotte? There's a motion, right? Did you make a motion, Bill?
Um, yes, I will move that we inform the.
And then is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and Charlotte?
Um, typically, they, they really do like to come and present and demonstrate how they have been good guardians of the taxpayers' investments and maybe do a brief slideshow and then answer any follow-up questions. So I think the kind of most of the facts are in the application. And then the presentations just add a little bit more detail and kind of complete the full picture. And anybody, you know, you guys have been through this many years. So if there's anything anybody wants to add that I missed in that, that's just kind of my take on it.
I think that we can even emphasize that we've been through these a lot. You know, keep that in mind that it, we don't need to do a lot of repetition. That we're well informed of what the programs are. Is there, is there something that you, you want to emphasize that might be new to the program? And might, the money might be helpful to you to initiate that and bring that in.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, let's get to the budget. Questions or comments?
No questions. It was so thorough. Thank you.
And if there's detail, obviously this is quite an overview. It's not meant to be extremely detailed. So if between now and the next meeting, anybody would like further details on any department budget or anything else, please let Kelsey and Paul know so they can provide that information to you. Or, um, anything else, please let Kelsey and Paul know, so they can provide that information to you. It's nice to see that debt repayment go down, right?
So we looking for a motion to approve this for publication? I'd make a motion then, that we, uh, approve the budget as presented for publication.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries, and thank you, Kelsey, you did a very nice job. Discussion and possible action regarding accepting a drainage easement in Tower Hill Meadows. Any questions or comments, or a motion?
Uh, these easements, they're just on the property, the, on the properties that haven't been purchased yet, these are the ones that are being developed, right? Alright. Thank you. And I would move to, for acceptance of the easement documents.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2024-14, accepting the dedication of improvements and authorizing the reduction of letter of credit for Tower Hill Meadows. Is there a motion, questions, or comments?
Second?
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding easement dedications related to Red Hawk Farms. Motion, questions, or comments?
Move to accept Resolution 2024-15?
This will be the dedication of Red Hawk.
What?
We're up here.
I'm in the wrong one? Good. Maybe someone else can try catch up for him.
Make a motion that we accept the easement documents, uh, related to the Red Hawk Farms development.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Um, fourteen, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2024-15, accepting dedication of improvements and authorizing reduction of letter of credit for Red Hawk Farms, second edition.
Same with the Tower Hill Meadows, uh, project, Red Hawk Farms, second edition has completed their public infrastructure improvements, including public streets, through the second lip of asphalt, sanitary sewer system, water distribution system, and surface water drainage. The outstanding amount required for the letter of credit would be six thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, plus ten percent down out for any outstanding work. City administration recommends approving Resolution 2024-15.
Questions or comments, or a motion?
I'd move approval of Resolution 20, uh, 24-15, um, uh, accepting the donation of improvements and authorizing reduction of letter of credit for Red Hawk Farms.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Fifteen, discussion and possible action regarding the 2024 Chicago Street Sunnyside Drive Water and Sewer Extension Project.
The Chicago Street, uh, Drive Water and Sewer Extension Project, uh, connects a fifteen inch sewer line across, along Sunnyside Drive, south across State Highway fifty-nine, to our sewer system. A project that involves looping a dead end water line on Sunnyside Drive. Project was advertised for bids in the Jade Swell Gazette, and we received three bids. Uh, RT Fox Contractors, Inc., being the low bid at two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty. Um, tab has, uh, bid tabulation has been provided for you. Bids submitted acknowledged the required items, items for a responsive bid, including a five percent bid bond. And RT Fox Contractors has completed previous, uh, projects for the city. Uh, total bid submitted by RT Fox Contractors, like I said, was two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Tit number nine will incur the water expense, the sewer expense will be special assessed to properties served by the improvement. Award of the, uh, 2024 Chicago Street Sunnyside Drive Water and Sewer Extension Project, RT Fox Contractors, in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars, is, uh, recommended by city administration.
Is this kind of what we thought it was gonna cost?
This is, uh, about, uh, fifty thousand less than what our engineer had estimated.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move to award the 2024 Chicago Street Sunnyside Drive Water Sewer Ex- Extensions Project to RT Fox Contractors, Inc., in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion sixteen, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2024-545, creating section fifty-eighty-two, regulating residency and loitering restrictions for sex offenders.
The city of Milton currently has no residency restrictions for sex offenders. The term sex offender generally refers to a person convicted of a particular sex-related crime who is required to register with the Wisconsin Sex Offender Registry. As of 2021, more than one-hundred-and-fifty municipalities in Wisconsin have enacted a sex offender residency, residency restriction ordinance. These local ordinances typically prohibit a sex offender from residing within a certain distance of identified locations like schools, playgrounds, daycares, et cetera. Without any restrictions in place, it allows sex offenders to reside anywhere in the city, which can set up offenders for failure on their path to rehabilitation, and place community members in an unsafe setting. Wisconsin statutes do not limit where most sex offenders may live. State law restricts only where a sexually violent person on supervised release may live, and where Department of Corrections manually place sex offenders released to parole or extended supervision. Sex offenders have a high rate of recidivism, and this ordinance proposal aims to reduce their potential to reoffend while keeping residents safe. There is no initial fiscal impact, aside from the review from consignee law offices, which has already been completed. City leadership recommends approval of ordinance 2024-545, creating section fifty-eighty-two for sex offender residency restrictions, loitering.
I do have a question, in terms of the, um, twelve-hundred feet. How, how is that measured? Is it measured from, you know, if you've got a park, for example? Is it the extreme edge of the park, and then you add the twelve-hundred?
It would be from the outside boundary line, so the nearest property line of the park to the residence that is being, uh, questioned for possible residency.
It's not as easy as just drawing a circle around
No, it'd be, yeah, it'd be-
Because there'd be different points.
Correct, yep. It takes a little bit of homework to figure out residency for it. Which is why it was reduced from the initial fifteen-hundred to twelve-hundred, just to accommodate the city of Milton confines.
I'll move to approve the ordinance 2024-545-50-82, the sex offender residency restrictions, loitering.
Second?
Just to clarify, are you, are you moving to approve the first reading, wave the second, and third, and the dot?
Yes, thank you.
Still second?
Alright, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Seventeen, discussion and possible action, no. Yes. Right? There's another one, okay. Discussion and possible action regarding forfeitures for ordinance regulating residency and loitering restrictions for sex offenders.
Uh, this memo was drafted by municipal court judge Christine Cuffler, relating to the ordinance the council just adopted. It articulates the first offense penalties totaling one-thousand and six dollars, and any second and subsequent offense for violation totaling two-thousand eighty-three dollars, total fine amount. The city administration, along with the municipal court judge Christine Cuffler, recommend approval of the forfeiture presented.
Is there questions or comments, or a motion?
I would move to approve the ordinance, the forfeitures for ordinance regulating residency and loitering restrictions for sex offenders. Correction, the forfeitures, the bond amounts. And does that require waiving, is there first, second, or?
No, no.
Forfeiture schedule.
It's a forfeiture schedule, but the ordinance sets for forfeiture. What the judge does is set for the bond schedule.
Okay.
When they write your tickets, then they know what put in for bond schedule.
Okay.
Okay, just to clarify, correct with?
Yeah, that's correct, which is why the first offense, excuse me, is slightly higher than was articulated in the ordinance itself, because of the imposed court costs.
Right. Yes.
I, I do have a question. That is-
That, that's, that in part with any other restrictions within the loitering aspect of that ordinance. Yeah, so it'd be on the individual, and typically, they already are registered with the Wisconsin Sex Offender Residency, or, um, Wisconsin Sex Offender Registering Program. And the director, or if that person is already on extended supervision, or has just spent time in confinement, jail, prison, and is now on extended supervision, their probation or parole agent, and/or the director for the Sex Offender Registry for our state typically informs them that the, the location that they're likely moving to may or may not have residency restrictions. So, they usually do their homework ahead of time to find that out. If they don't, they usually call the local police department, and/or county jurisdiction that has that residency in question up, and establishes that. So, um, it is on that individual, which is why our ordinances are made public, too.
And then, I had a question, after this is, uh, everything is passed, do we send this to Wisconsin Adult Probation and Parole, and the director, just like on FYI, this is new to Milton, or how would they know?
Yeah, I would inform our local, um, probation and parole office within Rock County. Um, I could also send it to the director for, uh, Wisconsin Sex Offender Registry Program, so they're aware of it in the event anybody in the future looking to move to Milton is aware.
Thank you. Was there a motion? And not a second?
I believe there was just a motion, but I don't believe there was a second, to approve the forfeiture schedule.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any other questions or comments?
I just have one.
It's not up to the public to necessarily know the twelve-hundred feet, they would report it to law enforcement, so the city of Milton Police Department, we would then investigate to see if there is an actual offense, if we're talking about somebody that's taken up and established residency, or is living at a residence in violation of that fourteen or more days as outlined in the ordinance, then we would use, utilize, utilize Google Maps, any other, uh, online mapping tool to determine the distance, straight line, from the nearest point of a park, school, whatever is articulated, to that nearest boundary line within that property for that offender.
So it's only residency?
Well, it's not, it's not up to residency though, too, it's also if they're, um, let me just pull up the ordinance itself.
No, those are good questions. And then typically, don't they inform local police when a sex offender is placed in the community? I think so.
Yes, isn't it somewhere?
Well, there is an online record, but I think typically, the, if they're on extended supervision, there is notification from that agency.
They usually send a notification to those living within a certain vicinity of that offender, when they're rehoused. So, section D of the ordinance under page, uh, point two on page four, within the ordinance itself, articulates loitering, which is not part of the residency portion. That says it's unlawful for any person, as defined as an offender, which is articulated above, to loiter or prowl in locations, which was discussed above, in a time, place, or manner not usual for law-abiding individuals under circumstances that warrant alarm for the safety. So just because they're there during the daytime, or while other people are there, does not make that illegal, just because they are a sex offender. So, if it's contrary to what's stated in sub-one of loitering, um, then that would be a violation within this ordinance. But primarily, though, what we'll potentially see happen is the residency violation, and not the loitering.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Eighteen, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2024-546, an ordinance amending section sixty-seven-to-seventy-one, print in A, and creating section sixty-six-point-seventy-one, print in five, regarding stone ice removal. print in A and creating section sixty-six point seventy-one, print in five regarding snow and ice removal.
Please.
Policy is actually what has not been followed, even though there's not an exception the way Mark indicated, so. If, for example, there is concern or feedback, we would have to evaluate the policy.
So what would, what would be the process? Now, right now, as I read the ordinance, the only exception to you having to clear the sidewalk is if you have a dead-end sidewalk. Um, you know, that is how it's written.
This one or the one on the books?
This one, we don't have one on the books, is it?
Well, we have one on the books, but there's no exemptions.
But, but there's no exception at all.
Okay, all right, just so I'm understanding what you're saying.
Even for the dead end. So thi- this, this gets us partway. Um, uh, right now, there's not, there wouldn't be a process for um, for an exemption process. Okay. And this would not establish that either.
The past practice has been people just come to the council, right? And, or they, I mean, we have been creating exemptions and not following our own ordinance. So there was some sort of weird thing going on.
Anything? Uh, people at Public Works knew, uh, you know, where we put the barricades. Uh, and they go around and put up the barricades saying the sidewalk was closed. Um, and um, uh, you know, the, the call that I got was, I'm surprised I haven't had a barricade and we've had snow.
So it's up to the council to decide how they would like to go forward.
So the exemption process, would that be in policy or in ordinance? And do we need to develop a new process to go with the proposed ordinance change?
Excuse me, the, that, the process would be a policy, how we want, how we'd want to enforce, or how we would want to allow people to um, request the exception, I guess.
Okay, and would that be done by the council, or would that be done by the Public Works Committee? I mean, defining the policy, is that work done by you? Is it done by the Public Works Committee, or is it? Uh, that, but from who, from the Public Works? Okay.
And. And we looked at other communities at some point in time. Need more time for moral clarity.
I like Bill's approach, that's my opinion, but, you know, I think if you approve it, you can still modify the ordinance after one reading, right? I mean.
Yes.
But it does a lot of time for thought.
I, I would move the approval of the first reading of um ordinance five forty-six amending sixty-six seventy-one A and creating sixty-six seventy-one F, snow and ice removal.
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second to approve the first um, the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then are you further asking staff to contact people that would be affected by the change in this ordinance? You had mentioned that people wouldn't know, how are they gonna know? You gonna do that? You know, Linda's not here anymore to do that, so. So you're not asking for a personal letter to be sent?
I don't think there's any.
Discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-four dash sixteen, authorizing resolution for urban forestry grant and urban forestry catastrophic storm grant programs.
Tree inventory, um, that was partially funded by this grant as well, uh, in a previous cycle. Uh, this resolution is required to apply for the grant. Uh, this application, we're looking to plant trees throughout the city, along with uh staff education and community outreach regarding the importance of trees. Uh, it's a cost share grant, so there's, there's a city match required. And the grant is reimbursable, which means that it must, the city must complete and fund the expenses related to the project before requesting reimbursement. City administration recommends approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, authorizing resolution for urban forestry grant and earth, urban forestry catastrophic storm grant programs. And I'd like to thank Jenny for her assistance putting this together.
Thank you, Jenny. So have we um applied for the catastrophic storm grant before?
I think that's just the title.
Uh, this is just the title of the resolution, so it's a weird, there's two different options. There's a startup grant and then there is the regular grant. This is the regular grant that you can use as catastrophic storm, or you can use it as just um things that are happening. It's just what they call the resolution, so yes, the answer is yes, but we haven't actually, at least in the recent probably five, seven years, let's say probably about seven years, we haven't used it or included any information about storms because we really haven't had any trees go down. But in this one with the May um storms that happened, um, I did put information in there specifically regarding those areas and that will be a portion that we will be replanting. And I believe it's uh forty-three, forty-three trees.
Forty-three trees in one storm.
Uh, forty-three trees total that are being discussed in this grant.
Okay, is there a motion or any questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, authorizing resolution for urban forestry grant and urban forestry catastrophic storm grant program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action setting a date for the November council meeting.
Oh, I can take this one. Uh, so there's kind of something big on the um, first November meeting, uh, the election, so uh, for budgeting purposes, uh, for publication, and then also for uh general information, we want, are asking the council to decide if they would like to have the uh November agenda, or excuse me, November council meeting the day after, the Wednesday after the election or at another date. So it would be the sixth or another date.
Six works for me as well.
Six is good.
It doesn't work for me, but who cares? Um. Is there a motion?
Move to approve a change to Wednesday, November sixth, for our next city, or our first November city council meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Some of the books, baby.
And then November nineteenth is our second one, right?
Yes. You need to move that too? Give the others.
Just a reminder. Okay. Committee reports. Anything?
We covered, I think, pretty much everything in the Public Works Committee meeting, so.
Yeah, that's true.
An ad nauseam.
I do want to comment, and maybe I've commented before on this, but you know, I am of a certain age. The Public Works Committee met for a very long time. They thoroughly discussed everything on the agenda, and they were really thoughtful about it. So I just want you to know that they really did put a lot of time into all these things that you saw on your agenda.
Good job, Mark.
Yep. Yes. Um, so, no committee reports, staff reports? Who wants to go first?
I'll go first, um, I just wanted to give a thanks to the police department staff, the Milton High School, or sorry, the Milton School District staff, and SWEAP, which is the Southern Emergency, Southern Wisconsin Emergency Preparedness Team. It's a volunteer organization in Rock County that assisted with the Milton Homecoming Parade last Friday. Um, I leaned heavily on outside organizations to ensure we had adequate staff at the event, just due to the flow, because I didn't realize how large a homecoming parade is. Um, I've never seen one this scale, um, with the amount of people there, so that was. I've never seen one this scale with the amount of people there, so that was nice to see. The event went very well, no issues on any end. So thank you to all those involved with that. I also wanted to just make note of the prescription drug takeback day that's slated in October. It's October 26th. That's going to be hosted in conjunction with the Milton Youth Coalition and Charlotte's Coffee Stop at 525 College Street from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. So we'll have staff on site to collect unused, unwanted prescription drugs that day. Instead of residents having to respond to the PD to drop those off, we'll have somebody there to collect, in addition to scoring a lot of candy. Sorry.
Because that's trunk or treat that day too, right?
Yes, sorry, Ashley.
You're gonna decorate the trunk?
We'll have red and blue lights.
Oh, so creative.
That was quick.
Who wants to go next?
Not much to report for the library, we're just doing what we do. Hopefully sometime next couple of weeks, we'll hear about that grant for the lower level, for a lower renovation. So I hear it's super competitive, so crossing our fingers very hard. For the Milton Youth Coalition, they hosted about 500 high school students at the third annual homecoming bonfire on Friday after the game. There was a lot, there was free food and music. And instead of one large bonfire, we did five fire pits. So I think it was really well attended and lots of fun. And lots of dancing, lots of walking tacos and coffee or drinks and cone of ice were had. So it was all free for the students. And then Chief talked about the trunk or treat. And then the next coalition meeting is actually this Thursday at 5:30 here in the council chambers. Everyone is welcome.
Thank you. And it really looked like it was just crowded when I drove by after the football game, that there was, it was a big event and successful, so. Thank you to all the volunteers. It's all volunteers, basically, running that. And it takes a lot of people, a lot of outside planning and a lot of outside volunteer hours. And I think clearly by the numbers each year, the kids really love it. And it's a nice substance-free event for them and for our community. So, thanks.
I'd just like to thank Charlotte for all the work she does with that, with her all time, and all the expense. It's pretty impressive.
Yes, yeah. Jenny?
So the city of Milton is going through a full property reevaluation and our open book ended today, October 1st. So we, as you saw, we have a head of closed door in our conference room. Our assessor, Paul Musser, has been meeting with people. He's had about forty calls, he's met in person with three people. Otherwise, all of the information has been provided over the phone or via email. We have had one person indicate that they may come to border review, but otherwise, it's been pretty quiet with that information. Just, again, those few questions. So our border review will be on October 23rd, beginning at 5:00 p.m. And the border review will be in session for two hours. Then on the election front, we have right now 377 absentee ballots with 90 returned. We have had de-escalation training for our election officials. Plus then they will be, they will be meeting with Rock County Clerk Lisa Tolson for specific presidential training over the next couple of weeks. So we do have some backup people and we also have some access to people from Rock County that will be assisting us as needed if anyone is not able to come in. So we're pretty set on that front right now. And then, actually, this week I will be meeting with all of Rock County clerks to brainstorm some ideas as far as things that will be happening at the election. And so I'm really excited about that. And then next week, I will be attending the Wisconsin Alcohol Policy Seminar. And this is funded by the Milton Youth Coalition for my attendance. This is a little different than most of the trainings I go to for alcohol because it is, instead of just clerks or city officials, it's actually going to be people such as researchers, substantive use, coalition members, preventions, preventionists, excuse me, transportation professionals and other organizations. So it's a little wider berth of it. So this will be very interesting. I did go last year and brought back a few different ideas that we have done, whether it's our forms that we're using or information that we're sending out on our social media about alcohol licensing.
Great. Mark, anything?
Leaf collection will be starting here this month. Just winterizing, starting to winterize some of the parks and those things, getting ready for fall and winter to come in.
I just want to tell you, when I was on my walk a few weeks ago, a resident stopped me and wanted to tell me, after they found out who I was, how happy they are with Public Works and how happy they were with the cleanup after the storm. They lived in an area where quite a few trees were down and they just had so many positive things to say about Public Works. So I just wanted you to know there's at least one very happy resident in this area.
There's a great staff of employees in the Public Works Department. A really, really good group of people.
Be sure to, I forgot to tell you. Kelsey, do you have anything going on?
No, I think most of my updates were during the agenda tonight. Just let you know, I will email out the nonprofit representatives in the morning to let them know of the time limit and so that they have time to prepare. And the thoughts that we talked about tonight, I have jotted down to share with them. So just so you know, I'll send that in the morning so they have the two weeks to prepare for the next meeting.
Thank you. And Paul?
Last Friday, was able to send out to council action plan for our strategic plan. Did meet with leadership team on Friday, right before I sent it out, so no changes were made from them. Gonna have some edits this week and hopefully a final draft of that action plan out to you. And then, within the next couple of weeks, the full strategic plan out.
I just want to thank Paul for this undertaking because he started a new job. The economic development side of the job has not slowed down at all. He's acclimating to a new job, a new staff, and he took on doing strategic planning on top of it and put a lot of work and effort into it. So I just want to say thank you for doing that. This isn't like the comprehensive plan where it's mandated by state law that we have it done, but it is the best practice for us to have an updated strategic plan. And I'm really happy that that's going to be in place for the years coming for all of you. So thank you very much for taking that on.
And if any council members has any questions or recommendations about what I sent out, please contact me. Thank you.
I don't think I missed anybody that needs to talk. Any other general items for anybody? Okay, here we go, team planning, team building. Okay, what you most, either you're, well, one thing you're not looking forward to about October and one thing you are looking forward to about October, go Paul.
I like the cool nights. I do not like that they will be getting colder.
Okay, does that even make sense? You like them cool, but not cold.
Know that they are going to be getting cold.
I'll go. I don't like that it's dark out right now. And I do like the cooler temperatures, cozy weather and fireplace weather.
I guess, I was gonna fall right in, I love fall weather, it's my favorite time of year. I hate leaves in the gutter and they're all starting to come down. And all the trees are my neighbor's trees that are filling my gutters. So that's awesome.
Okay, so I like the, like fires outside went super cold, smores and whatnot over a fire, but I don't like having to burn gas to warm up my house. An old building with single pane glass.
I don't like the colder air, but I love Halloween.
I like the excuse to be able to eat the candy that the kids don't get when they, you know, because you always have to have enough, which means there's some left for you. What I don't like is by the time we get late in October, that cold rainy day, when it's starting to feel cold and the rain feels extra cold.
I'm gonna go with the not liking the short days and I, I think, yeah, Halloween with the kids is fun.
I like the yummy comfort food that you feel better eating. But I will, I miss the fruits and the yogurts and the freshness of the food that we'll miss in this northern state.
That doesn't have hurricanes.
Right, right, exactly.
I will say I am excited because it's okay to like pumpkin spice right now, everything. Including my Power Dawn dish soap is pumpkin spice. And then what I absolutely hate though, I hate cold weather and cooler weather.
Of course, we can have whatever you want. Have I ever said no to anything?
No.
I'm looking, not looking forward to the shorter days, but I'm really looking forward to the ghost pictures that the library always takes in October. So first set's coming up on Saturday.
I don't like that November comes after October. Otherwise, I love pretty much everything about October because when it's seven o'clock and it's dark out, like, I can go to bed, right? When it's dark out, I can go to bed.
I like archery season in October. It started last month, but this is kind of when it picks up. I don't like the influx of residents that are trying to get in my home this time of year between box elder bugs and stink bugs, though.
No mice, right?
No mice, just, yeah, no mice.
I like the, I'm looking forward to and like the fall leaf colors. What I don't like is the fall leaf falling.
So poetic. Do we get everybody up here? So, go. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Alright, so Bill is going to be curating a pumpkin spice event at some council meeting in the future. Thank you, Bill.
I'm sorry, I won't be available that night.
That's okay, you know, people just, you know, they kind of come and go up here as they want. Am I not spicy enough just without a costume? Our next meeting date is October 15th, 2024, and is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? We're adjourned.